I'd like to open the meeting of the Austin P Board of Trustees. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Here.
Trustee Canata.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee May.
Here.
Trustee Mealer is absent. Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee McInnis.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Simler.
Here.
Nine members present.
We have a quorum, and I call the meeting to order. The first thing I'd like to do is talk about unfortunate situation that happened last in the fall meeting. We had made a hiring decision that was with a assistant professor that was adverse to the way everybody in the Austin P community felt. And I'd like to compliment the student body. You all did an incredible job handling a very, very difficult situation. You went to Dr. Leonard Clemens and got some advice on what to do. When we had our Board of Trustees meeting, there were lots of placards and boards in here. There was no disruption whatsoever. When we walked out, there was a line of people as we walked out. But I think the key thing was is that it was a peaceful demonstration. You let us know what was on your mind. What we couldn't tell you is that the same thing was on the executive board of Austin P as well as the Board of Trustees' mind, but there were legal things that had to be taken care of first. And I want to compliment the student body. That is one of the most critical, important assets of Austin P University. I'd like to stand up and give them a hand. (applause). Thank you. Also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Oscar Page, who was the university president from 98 to 2004. Personally, a friend of mine, he did, I know, at Austin P, when he started, there were 5,000 students. When he left, there were over 8,000 students. He was responsible for the Emergent Leaders Program at Austin P. Just did a great job overall. I know that he came to me and he said, "Don, I want you to raise a scholarship for your dad, Vernon Jenkins." And so I called Ford Motor Company and Ford Credit, and then Austin P called all these people, and we had one of the first scholarships in the business college for my dad, and our elders appreciated that from Oscar Page. And again, he passed away, but he was a tremendous leader for Austin P. Okay. Please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. Before I call for a vote, are there any items that you wish extracted from the consent Hearing none, I move for adoption of the agenda, including the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, which includes the consent agenda items. Do I have, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the September 20th, 2024 board meeting were circulated in advance. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. In accordance with Tennessee law, if there had been requests from the public to address the board, it would occur at this point in the meeting. However, the board did not receive any requests, so we will move to the next agenda item. I recognize President Licari, who will introduce today's campus spotlight.
Thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Before us, we have Dr. Perry Scanlon and his student fan club, apparently.[303.64][303.64](laughter) Welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting. It's great to see all of you. Dr. Scanlon is the Chair of the Department of Allied Health Sciences at Austin P State University, right here. And you may have seen him around. He's been a prominent faculty leader as well, a few years ago, serving as the President of the Faculty Senate. And so he is a very important person on campus, campus-wide. But in the Department of Allied Health Sciences, he's not only the Chair, he's a professor with tenure, and also the Program Director of the Medical Laboratory Science and Phlebotomy Programs. Doctor, excuse me, Dr. Scanlon earned his PhD in 2006 from the University of Illinois in Chicago in microbiology and immunology, and he is a licensed and certified medical laboratory scientist. He's got 13 peer-reviewed publications and over 50 presentations, so not only is he an excellent teacher in the classroom, but he is an accomplished researcher as well. Dr. Scanlon.
Thank you so much, President Licari. I'm pleased to present... Apologize this morning, I'm fighting off a little bit of a cold, but I am pleased to present the Department of Allied Health Sciences Spotlight at the Board of Trustees' meeting. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to talk about our programs, and we have several students from our department in attendance today at the Board of Trustees' meeting. So those comprise many of the students that represent our programs. The Department of Allied Health Sciences in the College of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics has five tenured track or tenured faculty in the Medical Laboratory Science program. We have some notable faces, specifically Faculty Trustee Jane Simler, the founder of our Diagnostic Laboratory, Dr. Heather Phillips, our phlebotomy and clinical coordinator, Dr. Eleanor Jader, and our newest faculty member, Mr. Avery Tibbs. Together, the faculty oversee and educate our Medical Laboratory Science students as part of our nationally accredited program. As noted by their graduating year, several of our faculty are alumni from Austin P State Our Radiologic Science program has three tenured or tenured track faculty. Our national award-winning faculty member, Dr. Jennifer Thompson, serves as the Program Director of the Radiologic Technology Program. Ms. Terry Crutcher is their clinical coordinator and fosters relationships with imaging facilities throughout the middle Tennessee area. Samantha Robinson is a first-year Radiologic Science faculty member. Our Diagnostic Laboratory is best known for its service to the Montgomery County community during the COVID-19 pandemic, providing testing to students, faculty, staff, and the community. Later, the Diagnostic Laboratory transitioned to a variety of patient testing, supporting the university community. We are preparing to relocate to the New Health Professions Building, which will provide excellent clinical space to serve the community. These three staff members are integral to our department. Ms. Julie McKinney is the Diagnostic Laboratory Director, and Ms. Haley Yaramilo is our Medical Laboratory Scientist. Ms. Rhonda Mosher serves as our department's Administrative Assistant. Our Allied Health Sciences Department resides on the first and second floors of the Sunquest Science Complex. We have been blessed to call this our home for the entire time the building has been The New Health Professions Building is currently under construction and is set to open in late summer. This new state-of-the-art facility will allow our department to continue its growth and expand its programs. The new space will allow us to conduct interprofessional education with other departments, such as nursing, public health, and counseling psychology. It will provide hands-on training to our students with the equipment provided in this new facility. The Diagnostic Laboratory will provide key laboratory services to the university and local community. The Medical Laboratory Science program has two degree programs, the traditional campus bachelor's degree and the two-year Medical Laboratory Technician to the four-year Medical Laboratory Science Bachelor's Degree. Much like the Registered Nurse to Bachelor of Science in Nursing program, the MLT to MLS program allows us to partner with community colleges so students can complete their bachelor's degree. The field of Medical Laboratory Science translates science into medical diagnostic testing so that physicians can treat patients. Greater than 70% of medical decisions are made based on laboratory testing. Our nationally accredited program educates students on the knowledge and scientific basis of pathologic conditions, the molecular techniques of testing, and the quality management of the testing process. Graduates in Medical Laboratory Science take a national certification examination that provides evidence of their competency to be licensed to practice in Tennessee. Graduates work in several areas, such as medical and hospital laboratories, public health and reference laboratories, biotechnology companies, laboratory equipment manufacturers, and medical research. Our Radiologic Science program is nationally accredited by the Joint Review Committee on Education in Radiologic Technology. Radiologic technologists perform diagnostic imaging and patient care procedures to diagnose and treat disease. Examples of imaging in the field of Radiologic Science include diagnostic imaging such as radiography, computed tomography, mammography, magnetic resonance imaging, nuclear medicine, and interventional radiology. Graduates in the field of Radiologic Science work in hospitals and imaging centers and in medical research. There is a strong community need for these skilled professionals in both professions. Our programs boast a 100% placement rate into their respective professions. Graduates of both our MLS and Radiologic Science programs often earn pay at $60,000 or above in their first job after graduation. The phlebotomy program provides students with a fast-track post-secondary certificate program that can be completed in less than six months. This collaboration with the Professional and Workforce Development Center provides specific specimen collection and phlebotomy training. The Department of Allied Health Science faculty and students do various community service activities, such as breast cancer awareness and Red Cross blood drives. Faculty and students also participate in health screening days that serve the students and the community. We provide laboratory testing, such as complete blood counts, glucose and cholesterol monitoring, and other testing that monitors your liver and kidney health. We provide testing for campus and community to help make Montgomery County and the surrounding areas healthier, and we are always looking for community partnerships. We also train the next generation of laboratory and radiologic technology professionals. So I want to thank you for learning about our programs today. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about our department or our programs.
I'd like to... Dr. Scanlon, 54 years ago this month, I graduated from medical school. And I remember very clearly my training in phlebotomy training was see one, do one, teach one. That was sort of how we did. I'm sure the patient I was doing it on didn't like it very much, but that's how, that's how we learned. I am so excited about this new program that you had, and your point is 100% of your students are placed. That is amazing. I don't think anybody else could state those things, and the importance that you're doing. Just to give you an example, when I began practice, 1977, 50% of patients that came to me, I'm an OB-GYN doctor, who had a breast cancer, it was a 50% mortality. Today, it's less than five, and much of it is due because of the testing and early detection and education and so forth that you're doing. And these students, with the exception of one with a Florida, she's a...[927.23][927.23](laughter) Probably will educate those patients when they come in and be able to take their education and educate their patients. And so I want to thank you for what you're doing. You're going to save lives. I do, I will pass this along to your technicians, and I pass along Rowe's rule is, they hadn't invented the test, it hadn't been wrong. That included Rowe. And so you have to take the test with what they are with your clinical presentation of your patient. But boy, I again, thank you, and I'm so excited about your new digs that you're going to move into, and thank all these students, too, that are doing that, that helped people like me for 50 years.
Thank you so much.
Chairman Jenkins, if I may. I'd also like to thank my colleague Perry for his presentation for our campus spotlight today. As you know, if you didn't before, this is my home department, so Allied Health Sciences and particularly Medical Laboratory Science. I would also like to join Dr. Rowe in thanking all of the students that are here today. It's wonderful that you are going to be joining these fields in which you are going to provide life-saving information for patients. As Dr. Rowe mentioned, when one of us is sick or our family members are sick, we know there are more questions than answers, and so I am very thankful that all of you will be there to provide those answers throughout your careers. And I also want to particularly thank the Medical Lab Science students. You are just a wonderful group to work with, and it's a joy to come to work every day. So thank you for being here today.
I'd like to mention, in the fall of 1990, I started at Austin P because at the time, Austin P State University and Belmont were the only two schools in the state that had a program in nuclear medicine technology. And I thought that's what I wanted to do. And then I almost passed out when I saw a butterfly needle being administered at UT Medical Center during my first winter break as an Austin P student, and said, "This is not going to work out." So then I changed to physical therapy, and now I'm in banking, working with people that take care of patients. So I just want to thank you because this, as we all know, is so needed and so appreciated. And when, and in my professional work, I'm in a lot of medical offices because they need a banker to help them so they can take care of patients. And so it's so encouraging because it's everybody that plays a part. It's not just the physician, it's the medical lab, it's the nurse, it's the radiologic technology. I was recently at Centennial Medical Center in Nashville in their MRI area. And so thank you so much, sincerely, both as a professor but also students, because the patient care is so important. I cannot begin to tell you as students, never forget that the reason you're doing this is because patient and patient care and bedside manner. And so, and it's a servant, truly, that all of you are doing, and the professors that are teaching and educating these students. Thank you again so much. And I'm excited about the new building because back in 1990, we didn't even have the Sunquest Science Complex.[1127.23][1127.23](laughter) It was all in McCord. So maybe back to when you were, was McCord where you went, Dr. Rowe?
Yep.
Trustee Rowe? Okay. So thank you. And look, he is living proof today that you can retire and retire looking young after you've served in medicine all those years, so.[1142.15][1142.15](laughter) And Dr. May, as a dentist, also went through a lot of training, too, and served in the military, so absolutely, and is a doctor of dental surgery. So if you have time after the meeting, students, I would highly suggest that you go to these two physicians here and pick their brains because they can probably teach you and share with you just a few quick nuggets that are very helpful. So thank you both so much.
Dr. Scanlon, thank you. We enjoyed the tour of your new facility yesterday. A mere 100,000 square feet and a mere $113 million, an incredible facility. And students, not all of us graduated with Pharoah, so we've got a lot of great talent on this board, and thank you, Carrie. The, I think one thing that I'd like to say is that I was most impressed by the fact that you're going to have four clinics, four clinics to help students and faculty in Clarksville, Tennessee with their medical needs, and I think that's an incredible ministry for you all as well as for the local. And thank you, Austin P, for what you contribute to our local economy each and every day. Thank you. Are there any further questions for Dr. Scanlon? Any further discussion? Thank you, Dr. Scanlon, we appreciate it. And thank you, students, for coming.
Thank you.[1234.01][1234.01](applause).
I recognize Trustee May, Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give us a report of the Academic Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee met and approved minutes from the Academic Affairs Committee meeting on September 20th, 2024. The committee also approved one action item that is on your consent agenda today, Policy 1-028 Accreditation. Provost Maria Cronly presented one information item, Supplemental Fall Enrollment. That includes my report.
Thank you, Trustee May. I recognize Trustee Rowe to give us a report of the Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from today's Audit Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes of the September 20th, 2024 Audit Committee meeting and the Audit Committee Executive Session. The committee heard presentations on the following information items. Information Technology Security Update, Review of Internal Audit Reports Released Between August 23rd, 2024 and November 7th, 2024, and the list of outstanding and audit recommendations. And lastly, new internal audit standards. That concludes my report of the Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Rowe. I recognize Trustee Canata to give us a report of the Committee meeting for Business and Finance.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the September 20th, 24 Committee meeting. The committee also reviewed and approved one action item which you approved today by consent, the Policy 1.029, the Generative Artificial Intelligence at Austin P. The committee considered and approved four action items needing consideration for this board. The four items were the October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2425, the designation of the quasi-endowments, the Morgan University Dining Facility renovation, and lastly, the University Center renovation. This concludes my report.
Trustee Canata, do you have a motion on October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2425?
I do. The meeting materials included information on this October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2425. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2425.
You've heard the motion to approve the October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2425. Since this is a motion, the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee McInnis.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Simler.
Yes.
The motion carries designation of the quasi-endowments.
Your meeting...
Trustee Canata, do you have a motion on the designation of quasi-endowments?
I sure do, yes.[1471.76][1471.76](laughter).
And she's eager.[1474.01][1474.01](laughter).
Your meeting materials included information on this designation of quasi-endowments. By direction of the committee, I move to designate the identified funds as quasi-endowments and to maintain the corpus of the funds while continuing to use the funds in accordance with the original intended purposes.
You've heard the motion to approve the designation of quasi-endowments. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee McInnis.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Simler.
Yes.
The motion carries. Trustee Canata, do you have a motion on the Morgan University Center Dining Facility renovation?
Heck, yes, I sure do.[1537.83][1537.83](laughter) Your meeting materials included information on the Morgan University Center Dining Facility renovation. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the Morgan University Center Dining Facility renovation.
You've heard the motion to approve the Morgan University Center Dining Facility renovation. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1572.76][1572.76](applause).
All opposed? The motion carries. Trustee Canata, do you have a motion on the Event Center renovation?
Yes, I do. Your meeting materials included information on the University Event Center renovation. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the University Event Center renovation.
You've heard the motion to approve the Event Center renovation. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1614.33][1614.33](applause).
All opposed? The motion carries. I recognize Trustee McInnis, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us a report of the Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the September 20th, 24 Committee meeting. There were no action items on the agenda. Business and Finance made up for that this morning.[1644.51][1644.51](laughter). Dr. Clemens presented the following information items, the student trustee selection process, the Career Success Center, and finally, the implementing engaged the Student Affairs Strategic Plan. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McInnis. The next item on our agenda is the board self-assessment. We had a questionnaire that went out to all the board members, and it had 20 questions on it. And it was an amazing conception of exactly what's going on at Austin P, what we thought the direction of Austin P was and how we thought our leadership was working on that. And it was amazing that I have these, I do these questionnaires on my leadership, and generally, I'll kick out one low one, and then, and then I'll average it and see what the figures are. In this particular case, when I took out the low one, we averaged 4.7 on a scale of five, which is 94%. And when I left everything in there, it was 4.6, which is 92%, which I think is a phenomenal leadership job on Dr. Licari and also his executive staff. His direction has been incredible for this university. I'll point out that we, our overall increase in students to last year about this time is 12%. I know, military-wise, we've got 700 additional students that are military-affiliated since Dr. Lisa White was president here. We've made incredible inroads in the military community. We look at the Health Professions Building, we look at all the fundraising that's been going on that has fueled the fire for all the new buildings we have. Soon, the O'Malley Center is going to be open. Thank you again, Mike. So, you know, you look around, and this building will be renovated soon. So it's just a really, really exciting time to be at Austin P. The one question that had the lowest score on it, which was 4.5, was the board adequately studies issues prior to the board action? studies issues prior to the Board action. And so, some of the board members are asking for more information. And I can tell you, for, for me personally, I am involved, I get tons of information all the time, and I, I give my opinion as a businessman on what the business side of a decision should be. And I'm almost overwhelmed with the amount of information I get. Some of it is very sensitive in nature that I get, and I know that we, all the time, you know, we're, we're kind of saddled by the sunshine law. I can, Mike could talk to me, I can talk to Carol, either one of the, anybody in this, in the executive board can talk to either one of them, but we can't talk to ourselves. The sunshine law prevents that. It is a fine line between talking about something and making a decision as to how you're going to vote on it later on. So, that being said, sometimes that limits the amount of information that can be sent out to the Board. But we're, I know that Dr. LeCary sends out us an update, a lot of times it has information in it that's, it's very, very useful, and I know as, as the Board of Trustees, you know, we have fiduciary responsibilities to make sure that, that this university operates at, at the peak performance. And so, our fiduciary part, also, sometimes there's some sensitive things that can't be discussed, but if there's any, anything additional that we might be able to, to put information-wise out to the trustees, I think that'd be beneficial. We, we all like to know what's going on, but we don't need to micromanage. But I'd just like to compliment Dr. LeCary on, on his leadership abilities. You see his red shoes all over campus all the time? And I'd like the Board of Trustees to stand up because a lot of us have got red shoes on. Now, come on, let's show them. Come on. Yeah, but we're wearing these red shoes in honor of Dr. LeCary, and I'm going to be wearing these red shoes to every Austin P function I go to, and I may embarrass you all when we have graduation, but when I have that robe on, I'm going to have my red shoes on under that red robe. So, let's get Dr. LeCary. And just for the record, I think all of us want to be more like Mike, and that's what the red shoes are about. So, okay, trustees, on the count of three, it's more like Mike. Are you ready? One, two, three.
More like Mike.
More like Mike.
More like Mike.
More like Mike.
Okay. Now that we've thoroughly embarrassed him.
His face matches the red shoes.
I recognize President LeCary to give his report and to also report on any interim items.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Thank you, everybody, for that. I am humbled and a little embarrassed, but certainly grateful for your support. This is a, a challenging job, and it requires a great board, which I certainly have, and a great team, which I certainly have. So, I think collectively, we're making a big difference for, for Austin P and our students. And we certainly had, we certainly had a great fall semester. You know, as, as was mentioned, we led, led the state in enrollment growth, student engagement and campus activities is way up. The new MBA got off to a roaring start. We cut ribbons on three facility projects. We launched new initiatives to further connect the surrounding community with campus, and so we've been very, very busy this, this fall. Even this week has been packed. On Wednesday, just two days ago, we hosted the Tennessee Supreme Court as part of their efforts to advance legal education for students. They heard two cases on Wednesday morning, and more than 400 high school students from around Montgomery County were also on campus to participate in that. And so I got a chance to address them, as did, of course, our recruiters from the admissions office. But it was a great experience for the court, and it was a great experience for all of those high school students as well as our own political science students. Wednesday evening, Kirsten and I were visited by world language students and world language faculty at Archwood for caroling and hot chocolate. That tradition continues. Also, earlier this week, we had a, an incredibly successful Gov'ing Tuesday where all 13 of our projects were fully funded and then some. I think most of them went way over the, the target goal. And so, that was a roaring success. I think we've, just in the last three of these Gov'ing Tuesdays, have, have raised more than $100,000 for specific academic and student-focused programs. So, that's a tremendous success. And then, on Tuesday evening, I ducked out of the reception with the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court in order to jump over to the Mabry Concert Hall to dress up as Santa Claus as part of the Holiday Showcase Concert by the School of Music. So, that was really fun. That beard is, was still itchy from that fake beard, but that was really fun. And as we look to next week, the holiday parties are on Thursday, of course, and we have commencement on Friday, which is always the best day. Just a quick update on the search for our next provost. As, as you all know, Dr. Cronly will be stepping out of that role and back and getting promoted back to faculty, basically. I think that's the way she's looking at it. The committee has been working hard under the direction of Dr. Leonard Clemens, begin narrowing down the pool of candidates next week. First-round semifinalist interviews via Zoom will be in January with on-campus interviews of the three finalists. To follow that, probably in early February, so that I can make a decision and an announcement prior to spring break. So, that, that process is going very, very well and is on track. As always, I want to give you just a little check-in on the priorities for the year and beyond, campus vitality, enrollment in all aspects, student success, including success after graduation, and laying the groundwork for the next comprehensive campaign. Those have been the four things that I've been hammering on. Of course, you heard a great report from Dr. Clemens about the implementation of the Engage Strategic Plan. We've got new programs for students and existing ones have grown, and as a result, engagement is up substantially. And we're tracking and evaluating these, these programs like never before so that we can gauge their effectiveness as we, as we implement. Enrollment, of course, overall growth is great, and that's coming from really across-the-board growth, which I think is a sign of, of tremendous strength for the university. Obviously, the freshman class continues to grow, but our, our graduate student body is growing as well. In fact, I think we've hit new records for graduate student enrollment each of the last three years. We are up in transfer students, and of course, as Chairman Jenkins mentioned, we are up substantially in military-affiliated students. The percentage of that now has hit 30% of our, of our student body is military-affiliated, and so that continues to grow very, very quickly. And as part of the enrollment efforts, we've now announced our new recruitment initiative, which is the Tuition Free at Austin P Initiative, which is a, a program that will allow students that are coming from households that earn less than $75,000 a year to attend Austin P tuition and fee-free. It is a scholarship that adds on to whatever the gap is after Pell and Hope Scholarship money and other kinds of financial aid or scholarships that a student might have, so that students that are in these, in these households who meet the GPA requirements will be able to attend tuition-free and fee-free at Austin P. And so this is a huge step forward for us in our mission of being a welcoming and in an engaging campus and the region's university of choice for students who want to improve their lives. And so this is a very, very exciting initiative for us to ensure that Austin P remains that accessible institution in the state of Tennessee. In terms of student success, especially student success after graduation, you heard another initiative out of Student Affairs, which is to revamp and improve the, the Career Success Center for our students to make sure that they have the support they need, the information they need to be successful in the job market. But then also, in terms of tracking our retention rates, our retention rate is, is up about a point compared to last year, so that's really good. And we hit our goal of at least 90% of the freshman class registering for the spring. We're at 91% now. We hit that a couple of weeks ago, and so we, we are in good shape going forward in terms of retention and progress towards degree. And then finally, in terms of the groundwork for the next comprehensive campaign, we are up about $2.8 million in, in dollars raised compared to this point last year. So, we're, we're having a strong, strong fall. Last year, we saw good growth in the number of donors, and so, as you know, going into a campaign, you need both. You need lots of people contributing to the, to the university, but you also need that dollar amount to increase as well. And this spring, we will get busy with identifying key campus priorities and expectations in terms of formally building the campaign. I do want to make a mention, as, as Chairman Jenkins discussed, Oscar Page, who served as Austin P's sixth president from 1988 through 1994, passed away recently, and he really did leave a lasting impact on this university and our students today, some of whom are here in various roles at the table. And the university and our student body continues to benefit from the things that he started, and so the, the legacy that he left this campus is, is truly important and will, and will last indefinitely. Finally, your packet includes lists of contracts and agreements that have been executed, state building commission actions that have occurred since the last board meeting. So, thank you, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. LeCary. Are there any comments or questions for Dr. LeCary?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just one comment. From being from one of those families that would have benefited from that scholarship, I can't thank you enough for your leadership, and we know that student loan debt is a huge issue, and if you leave college with, with a massive student loan, it really burdens you by what you can do as far as buying a car or a house or anything else. You can't, you can't qualify for the loan. And I see so many students who are graduating from medical school now who can't, who can't qualify to buy a house as a physician because of student loan debt. So, I want to congratulate this college for not, for taking that obstacle away from lower-income families, and you're to be applauded for that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd just like to personally thank you for the comments about President Page. I was a student here, I was SGA president when he was president, and I think he is smiling in heaven today because of the continued great success of Austin P State University and the wonderful collaboration we have here with all the different stakeholders at this university. He was a dear friend of mine, a mentor, and so I am living example, but also, most importantly, he was the epitome of a Christian servant leader that loved everybody. And Chairman, or trustee Atkins just told me that he went to his inauguration when he left here and was at Austin College. So, thank you both sincerely.
Thank you, Carrie. As a reminder, our next scheduled meeting will take place on April the 4th, and as Gerald Harrison tells us always, it's a great time to be a gov. I will move that the motion, I'll move that the meeting adjourned. Do we have a second?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
And merry Christmas to everyone.[1784.33]